I would like to call Adams County Board of Supervisors to order. Sheriff, we use an invitation.
May we bow our heads. While we thank you for this meeting and thank you for allowing us to be here today. Thank you for choosing us to carry out your will and your way. We will conduct business in a manner that honors you. May we be respectful in all the things we say, have our business ears on and get the business of your community and your work done. These are many more blessings we have to give in Jesus' name and pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to do a roll call of officers, supervisor Gray. Here. Supervisor Hutchison.
Present.
Supervisor Milton, present. Supervisor Wilson, here. Deputy Kirk, page Dean.
Present.
Chancellor Kirk, Brandon Lewis. Attorney Scott Slower.
Present.
And I am present. Thank you in the most for the approval of the documents.
Some of them.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchison and properly settled by Supervisor Wilson. Would that be in discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I'm voting against three zero eight four, the date is six nine twenty three.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor, vote by using the sign of "aye." In a poll, names have the same right. Motion carried by names. All right. Moving on to our special presentation, M.A.S. Scholarship, Ms. Taylor Hendon.
Mr. President, as you know, we are members of the M.A.S. Mississippi Association Supervisors and we, some of us are members of M.A.S. Mississippi Minority Caucus. This scholarship comes from the Minority Caucus. And this year, recipient of the Minority Caucus Scholarship is Ms. Taylor Hendon.
And it's for $1,000. You have another one. Okay, we had an electrofishing scholarship, but he's not here. All right. All right. Are we going to move on down to pile linking, community college update, Dr. Dewayne Milton?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to thank you for allowing me some time on the program this morning. I'm Dr. Dewayne Milton and I'm excited to begin my first year as the ninth president of the College Community College. I would like to introduce to you a few members of my team. Dr. Sandra Barnes, Vice President of the National Campus. Mr. Richard Baker, Vice President of Business Affairs. And also, I would like to recognize our Board of Trustees from Adams County. Our chairmen, Mr. Milton King, Mr. Lenwood Easterland, Mr. Chuck Gibber, Mr. Dante Ware. Thank you all for being here with us today. We're so proud that Adams County is a part of the Colleen District. We want to make sure that you realize that we want all students from Adams County to attend Kapua Linkin Community College. That's private and public school students at all possible. And we need your help to move the college forward. Our tuition is one of the lowest in this part of the state. Even though we raised it slightly from sixteen hundred to seventeen fifty per semester, I'm not sure that all the students and parents and our district personnel realize that it is a significant cost savings to attend Kapua Linkin Community College. And not to mention that the thousands of dollars that can be saved when compared to the university tuition is just a fact that the dollar goes further in Colleen. As usual, we have prepared a handout for you all to view. It includes highlights of the college. You may recognize a few of the faces on the document. Colleen is working hard to be a part of this community and to promote the jobs in this state, in this part of the state. And I could not be remiss without taking this opportunity to let you know that our men's basketball team won the state championship last year. And our ladies softball team won our first ever national championship in softball, Division II. And we're very proud of these teams. We're so grateful for the funding that we received from you all, the Adams County Board of Supervisors. Our budget depends on funds from our local counties. And we believe that Colleen is a solid investment. We hope to continue to be an effective economic development partner with you as we work to build Adams County and our part of Mississippi. We look forward to continuing and strengthening our longstanding relationship. And I say longstanding because Colleen has been a part of Adams County community for about fifty years, which on the sheet that you all are viewing, we had reception for that this past year. Thank you for your time and attention today as we share Colleen information. We know that Colleen is a great place. And we're working hard to ensure future opportunities for all students in our Colleen District. If you're on social media, please follow us on Facebook, Twitter, or even Instagram. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. And if possible, I would love to take a picture with you all, since this is my first meeting with the board in Adams County.
Yeah, well, Dr. Milton, we are grateful to have you and we look forward to our continued relationship. And it's been a good relationship so far. And before we take a picture, to show you how good our relationship is, they had a big tree fall when we was on the coast last time, last week, and they requested some help. Now, all we need to do is get it in writing so we can pass it and come help y'all. So at this moment, I do have a request in my hand. I'm asking for a motion to allow Adams County to be able to go help them remove the tree. Is it properly moved by Supervisor Gray and properly settled by Supervisor Hutchison? There be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of "aye." Aye. In a poll, names have the same right. That's the relationship we have now. I'm going to open the floor and then I'm going, if we're good, someone will get a picture. Anybody?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I just want to, at this time, I know I've congratulated y'all on the President, Dr. Sim, for a job well done. And I want to congratulate Dr. Milton for getting his job. I know he going to do a real good job at Colleen because he's a Colleen alum, man. I know he love Colleen to death, and I know he going to do what's best for Colleen. So congratulations on your new job.
And I just want to say congratulations on your job and I hope everything go well for you. I know we will be here to help in any way that we can, so if you need us, call on us.
I have a picture.
I just want to congratulate Dr. Milton on his new position, the Board of Trustees who are here. Thank y'all for doing what you do to support Colleen. I talked to Dr. Barnes periodically on certain issues, and I know she does a great job. I wrote through the Wesson campus not too long ago, and if you hadn't been through there a long time, you need to go. It's pretty phenomenal what they're doing there. I went to Del State with Brian Noble, and I was going to congratulate y'all on the national championship. That's really amazing.
Thank you.
We're here if we can do anything for y'all.
Congratulations. Thank you for being here. I appreciate the hard work of all these guys and ladies because they do a lot for our community. And I know most of these guys sitting here, and they're a good group. Thank you.
Thank you all. More members of the board, join us.
I'm going to put a ticture on and do about six, five.
Henry, are we ready?
Utah.
All right, are we ready? One, two, three. We get one more. One, two, three.
Wait, no, wait, yeah. I'm sorry. Could you move just back a bit? I want to make sure that I see everybody's names. And this gentleman, make sure that you all can see the camera. Camera, I can't figure it. There we go.
Yeah, a ticture.
Good. Got it. Perfect.
Thank you all.
You remind me of the mayor, man. You want a picture here where you go.
Right, Lynn Dobson, report. Mr. Robert.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and members of the board. My name is Robert Colvin. None of you know me. I am a benefits program specialist at the Wind Job Center. The Job Center is, at the Wind Job Center, we are a collaboration between Kapua Linkin Community College and the Mississippi Department of Employment Security. And essentially, the reason why I'm here is to offer our assistance along with our funding in terms of your workforce development. I'm not the leader of the Job Center. I'm just a benefits program specialist, as I said. Lori Alice is the Director of the Kapua Linkin Wind Job Center. The Job Center is there to assist people in developing themselves, especially those that are coming from communities that are previously disadvantaged in finding careers and in obtaining funding that they wouldn't normally be able to achieve in other ways. This is our, July will be the beginning of our new funding year. And there will be funds available for several programs that I would like to introduce today. And without you, I can't, it's not possible for us to bring the funds into the community where we'd like to keep them and not have them go elsewhere. There are four programs that I'd like to just talk about briefly, or five programs, I'm sorry. The first one is the Fidelity Bonding Program. The federal government has funds available for insurance policies up to $25,000 for any businesses that are willing to hire someone that has a felony on their record for a period of up to six months. That term can then be extended for an additional six months. So in other words, for any business that is cautious in hiring someone that has a felony on their record, they can be put at peace that there is an insurance policy that will cover them in the case of any loss due to theft or embezzlement. That's the first thing. The second thing is, and this is a program I hope that you will implement in your hiring process in the county, it's called the Work Opportunity Tax Credit. It's a tax deduction which is taken through the IRS. And it's unfortunately, for businesses, is, there's a long list of people that qualify for a tax deduction on the business's behalf. For instance, people that are on TANF, people that are on SNAP, ex-felons, disabled veterans, and so on. Were business hiring them, they would get tax credits ranging from $1,200 up to $9,600 for the highest category. And that's a federal program. Unfortunately, because the Board of Supervisors is a nonprofit, the only categories that you're able to deduct are the disabled veterans. Having said that, that's not necessarily a bad thing. And my suggestion is, for instance, the highest category is $9,600 tax deduction for disabled veterans that have been outworked for more than six months. The next, then there are programs that are not administered by the M.D.E.S. per se, by myself and my coworkers. We're not typical state employees. We all come from the private sector. I have a business myself. But, and I didn't apply for the job. Someone asked me to join. And I realized that it was a place where I could help a lot of people. And it's been very gratifying to be able to help people that walk into the Job Center with nothing and with tears in the eyes and to see them walk out with not tears of sadness, but tears of joy when they have a job on the same day. It doesn't happen often, but it does happen. So there are some programs administered through Kapua Linkin Community College at the Wind Job Center. We work closely together, the two teams. It's been fun trying to integrate them. And we have people dedicated to helping with paperwork, so don't worry about the paperwork. But your HR department will be absolutely instrumental in simplifying and helping us identify the jobs that could work, for instance, for a fidelity bonding program within the community in the county. So there are some low-risk jobs we, I would recommend you consider hiring people that have something on their record. We have a huge backlog of people that need to be reintegrated into the community. And without your help, we can't do that. As one of the biggest employers in the community, I don't see us being able to to assist the Sheriff's Department or Police Department in preventing recidivism without getting the buy-in from large employers in trying to integrate these communities into the programs. The other thing is, the two programs that, the three programs that I'm going to talk about now, run by Colleen, can bring significant funds into your coffers. The first one is the Internment Program, internship, sorry, not internment, internship program. It is a program whereby you hire someone on your terms. They are paid for by an employment agency for a period of time up to 320 hours of labor, free of charge to the employer. There are obviously certain careers that don't fall within that because the worker's compensation goes through, for instance, a camp agency. Their liability and their workers' comp would not cover anything that is dangerous, for instance, or that involves monetary issues. So in other words, it's generally for office workers. But when you are looking at a forty-hour work week and that entire payroll is paid for by this program, that sting of hiring somebody and trying to understand whether they're going to work in your organization or not is taken out of it. The next program is the On-the-Job Training Program. That is a reimbursement of up to 50% of standard payroll to six hundred and forty hours worth. Depends on the job. And obviously, certain jobs require more training than others. And obviously, there's, there are a number of hours that are available for each one. You know, some of the jobs are not what we're aiming for. We're aiming for jobs where people can actually earn a living wage. And that goes for both of those programs. Generally, those would be things that are mechanically involved. They could be administrative. As a general rule, a lot of blue-collar type working. And then there's, so those are those two programs. We then have something that's less, of less interest to you. It's called the ITA Program. It's the Individual Training Account. That's for people that really don't have the financial means to go and study something. Colleen administers that as well. And I'm sorry if I made your eyes glaze over, but I'd rather have the money come into the community than go elsewhere, into other workforce areas. And whether you choose to use, I don't know, you, you know, on the work, let's have a look at it. The Work Opportunity Tax Credit deductions are unlimited from the IRS. The internship is unlimited. The Work Opportunity, oh, sorry, the On-the-Job Training Tax Reimbursement, it's up to $30,000 a year. But the internships are pretty much unlimited. Now, I can't tell you what our budget is going to be because we'll only find it out next year. And when I say next year, I mean next month. But I'd rather put the things in place now to have the money come here, talk to your local HR department, and try and put certain jobs and certain job descriptions in place so that the money can run. If you don't move it this way, it may go somewhere else. Anyway, I just want to leave you that. If you have any other questions, you're welcome to ask.
Well, I appreciate you coming and letting the community know and to kind of know what you had to offer. But I do want to let you know, I think it's two years, or maybe three, as a board, we did pass a second change that, that we do hire people with names on their record after review. You know, we get, get it to happen. But I want to make sure we had the right information so we can kind of find, follow in the right track. You can, and Human Resources is a good contact, but I think everything goes through our administrative force for hiring and finding out correct, not Human Resources. So you can, we need to get in touch with the right people. Human Resources do work them in and bring them up, but they're not actually over the hiring of the jobs and the job descriptions like that. So we just want to make sure you're in the right contact, get you in contact with the right people. And hopefully, in the future, that we can use some of these programs. And, you know, hopefully, we can spread the news to the community because this is something that's needed for the community, especially for our small businesses that can qualify. It can help a lot. And we appreciate your time. And I'm going to open the floor to the rest of the board that have any more questions to comment.
Question, very important question. I work on the local workforce goal with, and the internship, the intern. I know that money is there for that. And we always get someone to work their intern. And the pay, is the pay is always questioned. What is the pay? Is it, is it $15 an hour?
I have to check up. So there is a minimum amount that needs to be paid. And I believe it is twelve.
Twelve, okay.
And I, there is a maximum that the internship can cover. But I mean, that's usually a lot more than what the person is going to pay. Like, for instance, on the On-the-Job Training Program, that is, you know, $30 an hour.
Right.
You know, so we are talking, you know, you have a lot of E-well. The thing is that the whole point, purpose behind the program, the internship program, is to make sure that people are able to, you know, aspire to a better position rather than that one that's a lower position, you know, something that is a living wage essentially. But I can, I will gladly ensure that everything gets sent through to, I'm not sure if it's covered that needs to get it.
Yeah.
But I will gladly send you everything initially so that you have all the information at different levels.
Okay. And I know there was still some, is there still some funding? No, we got to wait until next month for that funding because there was some for Jim.
Oh, boy, oh, boy. It went out quickly.
Okay, so it's the beginning of the first month.
That's why I'm going to try and jump on it. Next month. Now, obviously, the funds don't arrive on the first of July.
Right.
You know, but during the fourth of July. And that's why I want to take this time now to try and find some positions already that we can earmark for those funds.
Thank you.
Any more? Three, two, one.
My question is, you mentioning the interim program where the county hires somebody and you think for six months, are they a salary?
Well, it's a period of time depending on the type of position. Each position, you know, a present, for instance, an office administration position will require a different amount of training to a supervisor-type position. And according to that amount that is predetermined, that is the amount of hours that the temp agency would actually fund that for. So it could be four hundred and eighty, oh, sorry, it could be 240 hours, it could be 180 hours. It depends on the type of position, but it's pretty generous.
Maybe I answered the wrong thing because that, that, y'all provide some kind of benefit for when an employee is first hired with the city or the county and for the first, I don't know how many months that they pay the salary.
That's correct. That's the internship program.
Okay, now, are we already enrolled in that or we need to do what?
There's no enrollment for you. You, you, there is nothing that you need to do other than, say, please go ahead. Let's talk to the relevant, you know, stakeholders, and I do that in the background, you know.
Yeah, the question I'm asking is this.
You're fine. You don't have to enroll in any of these.
The question I'm asking is this, make it plain, because if we hire individuals, almost every board meeting, are those individuals a part of what you're talking about? And if they're not, what do we need to do to get them to be a part of utilizing the service that you?
It's a one-on-one conversation between us and that individual and your relevant people that hire them. So in other words, let's say you would like to hire somebody that is a maintenance technician to do a particular job. Each job is, description is obviously different. And so it's basically on a case-by-case basis, but it doesn't take long to get those things squared away. So in other words, when you say, I want to hire Jimmy to do a tractor maintenance tech job, your HR or whoever it is department would shoot, for instance, me an email and say, hey, I'd like to involve this person in OJT program or on the internship program. And this is the job description where you get me, you know, can you start the ball rolling? And then we'll take it from there. There's very little that you have to actually do.
Thank you.
Did I answer the question on my own reading?
Well, to my understanding, I thought we was already enrolled in this because everybody, the previous administrator to this administrator, I thought this board had went on record saying that that's exactly what we wanted to do. Send them through there where we can get the additional funding where we would. Send them through there where we can get the additional funding, where we wouldn't have to pay it, and then once it's over with, we start paying, and I thought we was already on board with that, so I guess we not, so we need to figure out what we need to do to get on board.
I know we've been doing, we have been doing it, I don't know if it stopped or whatever, but I know we have been doing it.
Oh, we've been doing it from jail, was here.
Yeah, we were here, he was doing it.
Something after our department.
All right, well, we, we've kind of been through a couple administrations, so I appreciate the information, and we'll do our necessary part to make sure we get back on track with you, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Sharika Miller, please, um, quit the power.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I wanted to tell me, see if I can have one more lifeguard, did the one D's have a thing? And I also wanted to request to see if I can get some security, like the things, because you've been running into like a few of problems earlier. And also, Jimmy did promise some of our lifeguards that came, that if they got recertified, that they will be reimbursed. But then I did have some receipts, because I talked to Ms. Brandy about that, so this is another thing. And he promised them like different pay rates, so the pay rate that we had when I first came, like the one that he looked at the papers, like, I gave him a different pay rate than what he promised them, so Ms. Brandy also said I could do like a pay rate change by a dollar a word.
There'll be pay rate change, but definitely have to be go through to Ms. Brandy, the administrator, because we all, we got a form in place for county government, that we all fill them out, and then they look at it to make sure we don't owe the budget. So definitely, we're gonna have to definitely go through how they're going through Ms. Brandy.
Okay.
And on your, who's your lifeguard hiring?
My name is Mallory McAllen. I took in her information to HR, but I do have a pay report with this with these, yeah, for her.
So you have the form?
Yes, I do, because I've already gave it to me and I don't do them. I also have those for the last day, we get me rest.
Okay, I'll have to go to Ms. Brandy, and that's gonna have to be under review. And so what, what's the name of the hire?
My name is Mallory McAllen.
Mallory McAllen, um. I need, I need to pay for it. She got, give it just a second.
Sharika, you had an incident pulled about a week ago or so?
With the police, like I wanted to get the police to go. Yes.
And since then, policemen coming by is pretty regular?
Yeah, I had to call Travis because remember the first meeting, Travis just told me I could call him whenever, but I called him and I couldn't get in touch with him, so I just called the police and they came and I, they made a demand from the police. It was just an incident that Billy and the kid, and I made them get out, and the parents called, and it was just horrible.
Yeah, Billy, you're in, in here instead of the sheriff. I, I just thought if the police were gonna do some patrols by there, maybe sheriff's deputies could ride by there pretty regularly, just you have a presence. Because some, some of that stuff kind of got out of hand, I think, out there, and there wasn't a whole lot you could do about it.
It wasn't like so much bad, like it wasn't that bad, it's just that some parents were sitting on the food deck, like they came in, it was going on, but the parents of the kids never called until like the next day. So I didn't even get anybody's name, well, I got names from the parents that were on food deck, because one of them was a teacher, and she knew them from school, so that's how I got all the names, and then I just called the kids, and they came and got my names. But they were trying to do it discreetly.
Okay.
All right, well, we're gonna have to wait just a second on the hiring, because that's the application on, I have to send her to HR, because we need the necessary paperwork.
Well, I did do, she did do, I would pay work for HR, I sent, that's what I mean already.
Yeah, well, she got it, we, I, I need this, you know, I need the human resources app of being signed, her paperwork, because I know I did have a regular application, so I need Ms. Brandon's signature on that.
What, back there, just a mint.
Yeah, I see them, so, hey, so she gonna get it, I bet the truck gonna take it up there.
Is Brenda back there?
Yeah, just, just hold just a minute, and she getting paperwork, so we'll get together. Mr. Eric Adams, if you would, Ms. Sharika, just give us just a minute.
Okay.
Red Pest Control.
Good morning, my name's Eric Adams, and I'm here with Red Pest Solutions. I'm here in response to an email stating that the board had not approved to repay the, to pay for the renewal of the termite contract on the Adams County Safe Room. And in the email, it stated that the board would be seeking to have it retreated through a local company, which Red Pest is a local company, we've been in the area since nineteen forty-three. But on that note, it's gonna cost the county thousands of dollars to get this retreated with other company, when it's gonna cost the county two hundred, a little over two hundred dollars to pay the renewal, just to keep the contract going, which we one hundred percent maintain everything. So I'm, I'm here just to ask the board to reconsider keeping this contract going.
Yeah, I, I talked to him, and so this is where we, was the issue, there wasn't an issue with it, and that's why I told you to come to the board, so we can get, I know on the last contract, we was talking about rodents or something like that, it wasn't about the termite, and I know some people had some concerns on the board, some of these supervisors had calls about some rodents and different things I hadn't had, and so that's why I want you to come to here.
Right.
And so, and I talked to the attorney about it, I did call him after you called me and put you on the thing. So you only do termites, am I correct?
We only have the termite contract on the Adams County buildings, another company has the general pest control.
That was the issue, no.
The issue with general pest control.
Well, we, we would be more happy to place a bid when that kind of, when that comes up.
There was no talk about y'all not being loaded, that was, it wasn't about the termite.
Right.
And not to cut you off, Ms. Miller, it wa, it was about rodents, it wasn't about termite, so, without regret.
Correct.
So, yeah, which I have a copy of that invoice that was sent to y'all that I'd be more than happy to leave with y'all, but, yeah, it's just that, you know, we, we just have the termite contracts on the building. But on the next go-round for bids, we will place a bid for the general pest control.
And those are separate contracts?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Fred, let.
Yes, sir.
In, in just a little short summary, could you explain exactly what you sprayed forward?
Okay, what we do is, is we have, we walk around the county buildings, this building has a shared apartment building, we have the little green stations that are in the ground, and these green stations are to protect the building from termites getting in the building. This is a natural green product, the termite can go to it, eat it, carry it back to the colony, and kill the colony out. And we come by and we inspect the building and the stations once a year, and if any of them need to be replaced, refilled, or anything, that's part of your contract. We one hundred percent maintain the system.
So in other words, what you sprayed forward ain't got nothing to do with?
Roaches or rats and all of that.
Thank you, sir.
And one of the things, one of the things I might add here is, it's two hundred dollars a year to check those, but if you hired a different company, they probably charging fifteen to eighteen hundred dollars to get started, and then it'd be two or three hundred dollars.
Correct.
So, so we'd, we'd have to pay a lot more.
But what I, what I think, it was a total mix-up of what we see, because it was, it was, had to be a total mix-up of misunderstanding. I don't know, Mr. Turner, we're just leaving, we'll get checked on, there's two separate contracts, am I correct?
Yeah. That's what he's saying, I, I have no reason not to believe.
Right.
I don't remember the.
I saw your pests, yeah, I walked by just a second ago, but we, we don't, we used to have pests on a certain building, and I think when Mr. Murray was still here, it was brought up to have the one pest company do all the general pests, and so, and then we maintained the termite because we had already had it. So that was about when Mr. Murray was still here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Adams, I think you cleared it up.
I'd like to congratulate this man, he's a, he goes to church with us, and he's a recent cancer survivor, he got to ring the bell recently, I think, and because he's cancer-free, congratulate him.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're gonna move on down to city government, and city, city government.
Jelly, not with the city, huh? Do we need to do that? I'll make, I'll make a question.
Can I get a motion?
To retain Red Pest?
No, you make a payment.
I'll make a payment, okay.
Yeah, we need to make a, get a motion to pay Red Pest, pay the invoice on Red Pest, and a motion with management supervisor Wilson, and it's second by supervisor Milton. Would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you, we sign a I. Interposed, nades have the same right. All right, here we go, I have a paperwork, Ms. Mallory, Mallory McAllen.
McAllen.
McAllen. I do have a paperwork, it's nine dollars an hour, lifeguard, I have to pull, can I get a motion?
Yes, sir.
It's been properly moved by supervisor Gray and properly seconded by supervisor Hutchins, would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you, we sign a I. Interposed, nades have the same right, motion carried unanimous. All right, because now I can move on down to the department reports.
Good morning, my name is Denise Price, and I'm a purchase clerk for Adams County. First of all, I was informed by Wes Carey at Kirk Auto Group on Thursday, June fifteenth, that the emergency response vehicle was delivered today. So the emergency management will pick up this vehicle once. Second of all, the seven sheriff vehicles, I'm informing, they will be shipping today or tomorrow to him at Kirk Auto Group. And as the vehicles come in, he'll put the uplift on and deliver to us. With that being said, last board meeting, we spoke about the lease purchase, we contacted four banks, three responded, and we did a temporary motion on it because Scott had to step out, so I'm just gonna bring it back over, briefly go over that information again. Delta Bank offered five point nineteen percent for five years, four point ninety-nine percent for three years, Trustmark offered five point six percent for three years, and five point three nine percent for five years, Cadence offered five point seven eight for three and five years. So we, Delta had the lowest interest rate. So with that being said, we have to do a motion on that, to go ahead and proceed with giving the VIN numbers to Delta.
Last meeting, we approved any legal approval, we had talked, and all of the way forth to submit over those, those Vins.
Yes.
It's already approved.
Okay.
It was approved last meeting, depend, according to waiting on legal review, it was approved, so we wouldn't have to come back. Well, always, if you had that problem, you can always bring it back, it's easier to be safer than us to make mistakes.
Okay, so we'll get the paperwork on with Delta Bank.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions?
Yes, any question, any woman you have any questions?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to know, do you know where we are on the structures of playground?
No, Shaquie spoke with them right before she went to the board meeting, but I will follow up and give you that information, I think they did update, I'm not sure what it was.
Okay. Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions?
No, ma'am, thank you for your job.
Thank you.
All right, next departmental reports.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I only have one, Southwest Mississippi Mental Field, at one fifty Jeff Davis Boulevard. Evidently, they purchased it in twenty-one, and it says in this email that they were exempt per paragraph nine of the Adams County Resolution. So maybe they came and got an exemption, and we didn't know about it, is that right?
They're a governmental entity, so they're entitled to an exemption.
Oh, so what that nine is? So we're asking for it to be removed, we didn't know that, while working that part, we didn't know it was exempt.
All right, well, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by supervisor Hutchins, can I get a second? Been properly seconded by supervisor Milton, would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you, we sign a I. Interposed, nades have the same right, motion carried unanimous, thank you. Next departmental report.
She didn't, she didn't tell us how much money we were losing.
It was getting totaled, it was like twenty thousand of the counties.
It's all in mine.
I mean, so they're actually saving money for this, the state and county organization, and fifteen of it is going to the school.
Mr. Barrett?
Good morning. I submitted a travel request for myself, the assistant DA, defense attorney, both judges, and one of the case manager for the Adult Road Court.
Yes, you have all those big papers right here?
Yes.
Where are you from, Mississippi Association, off of Mississippi?
Yes, sir.
All right, I have a paperwork, let me go through and make sure, because it's pretty thick. Judge Deborah Blackwell, that correct? Tim Blaylock?
Yes.
Just calling Drake?
Yes.
Jessica Perry?
Yes.
Matt Burson?
Yes.
And Joe Wilson?
Yes, and that money is, this money is reimbursable by AOC, so we will get the money back.
So I did talk about, we need to.
Need a motion?
One motion, I'm gonna do one motion, so I just wanted to make sure, that's why I wanted to make sure I had all of them. We're gonna do one motion approving the travel to the Mississippi Association Drug Court Professional Conference, off of Mississippi, so it's been, need a motion, it's been properly moved by supervisor Wilson and properly seconded by supervisor Gray. Is there any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you, we sign a I. Interposed, nades have the same right.
Okay, the second thing that I have is, I submitted a copy of an M or memorandum handed to Attorney Slover last week to be presented to the board for approval. It's a continuation, the previous one expired on April the first of twenty-three, this one starts on April the second of twenty-three, and goes through September thirty of twenty-three.
Yes, the CNOU, the previously done, is this reimbursed as well from AOC?
Yes.
I previously approved it.
Do I need a motion?
Yes, sir.
I need a motion to approve the previous MOU?
You can create a new one, but it's the same form.
Okay. Just want to make sure, so she get it.
Oh, she had a copy.
Get it, right. I, I brought a copy that I emailed you.
Yeah.
So, same thing.
Yeah, bring it up.
So I need a motion, it was, it was moved by supervisor Milton, and then seconded, seconded by supervisor Wilson, would there be any discussion? All in favor, vote by you, we sign a I. Interposed, nades have the same right, motion carried unanimous. All right, anything else, Mr. Barrett?
No, sir.
All right, next. All right, next departmental report.
Good morning, board, Terrence Bailey, tax collector. I have two things today to get approved, first thing, um, I request a travel to the ninety-fourth Annual Mississippi Assessment and Collection Association Conference, July nineteenth and thirteenth, here in the Lexington, Mississippi.
I have it in my hand.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you heard the request, uh, the tax collector? Can I get a motion, it's been properly moved by supervisor Hutchins? And it's been properly settled by, uh, supervisor Milton, discussion? If there's any discussion, I have a discussion, I need the, you had a, the form, you have, I have your travel and where you're going, but I don't have a form for this. Okay, well, we can do it, okay, we good, all right, discussion, that's all we want, all we're. All ready to vote, all in favor, vote by you, you sign an I. Interposed, may they have the same right, motion carried unanimous. All right.
And the second thing that I have is, uh, the GovE's contract of our annual land sales. There was, uh, only one modification to the contract this year, which was there are no GovE's, GovE's will no longer be charging a percentage of our total sales. Uh, what they're doing now is they're, they're getting back the county's twenty dollars per redemption, uh, on each parcel sold. So, like, when they go to the Chancery Place Office to redeem, and they're gonna get charged a twenty dollar fee, and that money will go back to the county. So, it's supposed to be a benefit to the county. Thank you, Scott may know a little bit about it.
They charge twenty dollars on the front end, and then we can charge that cost on the back end, is what you're saying. It'd be, it's the same contract we entered into several years ago, this provides for online, uh, tax sales. It's been, I think, very, very successful, it would increase the amount of doing, on top of being faster and, you know, easier for the tax collection office. I got this this morning, I saw it was the same contract, so I printed off the same addendum that we previously. I've got the contract, I'm gonna ask the addendum to be approved along with it.
Okay, so you heard the request of the, uh, tax collector, along with the discussion from our attorney, so can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by supervisor Hutchins, can I get a second? It's been properly settled by supervisor Wilson, would there be any more discussion? If there won't be any more discussion, all in favor vote by you, you sign an I. Interposed, may they have the same right, motion carried unanimous.
Thank you.
Hey, good morning, board.
Good morning.
Robert Brad, I have a cabinet and a director. I just got a couple of things, uh, this morning, uh, as you know, uh, we had hurricane season, we received a lot of storms throughout, uh, state Mississippi. Those are from some fronts coming through, so, well, all the citizens know, if you get any damage to your house or anything, go ahead and report that, we have to report that to the state. Uh, don't try to sit on it, you know, just let your constituents know, they can call my office, or they can go on the Adams County website and report any damages. We need, uh, need that information when we make those assessments, because what I'm finding out is people's houses are being destroyed, and I'm finding out at the last minute, they're not reporting, but if they go and report that to them, we may just try to get re across and get them some help. So, just let your constituents know that, all of that. Uh, also, another thing, uh, with debris removal, uh, from our last conference, the state is thinking about, uh, having, um, debris removal companies in different regions, uh, so I know as a board, uh, Gilbert Robbins and, uh, Scott, we, we need to try to go and get a debris removal contract in place, it don't cost us nothing to have it in place, but what it does is, it outlines a company that Adams County will use in the event that we need debris removed. And that company will be, uh, allocated to Adams County. So, those are some of the things we need to start talking about, I know that would be beneficial to Robert and also the board, because we don't wanna wait till the last minute, trying to find a debris removal company that done any homework on them. And because, like I said, working and rolling for it, a lot of companies would come take advantage of it. So, that's something we need to be proactive before we get storms or anything, uh, like a ice storm or a hurricane or tornado come to this county. We already have a designated debris removal company, they have a working relationship with Robert there. All the understandings will be on the table before we, uh, activate, so the purpose of the contract is, they're outlined what they can do, what they're gonna do, responsibilities, and we have no up hand. And then at that point, if we get into damage, we can activate it, we don't start paying them until we actually get a, uh, a declaration and things like that. So, there's no money cost to fronts, I just wanna bring it for the board that we need to start soliciting, uh, for the, I don't know if Robbie could have been a great idea to start having that done, so we need to start doing it now. Uh, so we just need to try to get approval from the board, try to start soliciting.
It's similar to what we do in our six-month term bids, we go ahead and get prices on the front end, and then when we have price set, we use it. It's a lot better to do it now, when they're not emergency versus, weren't an emergency, they, they can deal that, and they might charge you a lot less.
Right. So, we just need approval from the board to go and start soliciting, getting that debris removal.
Properly moved by supervisor Milton, properly settled by supervisor Wilson, that, uh, we move forward and looking for a debris removal company, uh, in case of, uh, what event, and would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by you, you sign an I. Interposed, may they have the same right, motion carried unanimous.
Also, uh, our contract worker's contract is expiring, I wanna go ahead and extend those. Also, with Sam Meyer, uh, go ahead and extend his contract, uh, to our next year, and I also wanna bring on Mike Ellis. He's another one of our volunteers, he'll take Scott to other places, he's gonna come over and try to help us with the rest and stuff like that. And their rate is five hundred dollars per month.
Do we need paperwork to get?
Our Scott got it.
And Mike Ellis is all healed up from the surgeries?
Yeah, he's.
So, he's ready to go?
He's ready to go.
Good, he's a good man.
You heard the request of the M, I, T, A, Director, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by supervisor Wilson, properly settled by supervisor Hutchins, uh, would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you, you sign an I. Interposed, may they have the same right.
Okay, next, I want to, uh, request a travel, uh, for myself, Daryl Smith, uh, Bree Cooks and Sam Meyer, to be traveling to Choctaw, Mississippi, uh, July eleventh and twelfth for our annual, Madima Annual Business Meet.
I have it in my hand, uh, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by supervisor Hutchins? Properly settled by supervisor Wilson, would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you, you sign an I. Interposed, may they have the same right. All right, motion carried unanimous.
Yeah, I just wanna openly thank, uh, Energy Southwest and our contractor, Mr. Cliff, Smith Cliff, guy with the bucket truck that helped us with the, uh, sirens, uh, you know, they were very, you know, instrumental in helping us get that back together so they can have a siren after COVID days. Uh, she, she informed me that it's working, it rotated for two minutes and thirteen seconds, so she, she let me know.
It wasn't a she that called me.
Huh?
It was not a she that called me.
Well, no, it's a, it's a lady that she marches for, so, yeah, she, she, she watched the revolutions in time, so, yeah.
She clocked it for you?
She clocked it for us, so, yeah, we, we're a good race out there, so, I would thank you all for that. If you have any question for the board, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brad.
Thank you, Brad.
Morning, Daryl Smith, five-four, later. Uh, I only have, just, uh, letting you know, since May and up to the present day, we have done two hundred and ninety-five residents, uh, for a fire extinguisher train. And that's youth and adults combined. Ten now with the, before I had in my class. And if anyone wants to do hands-on for a fire extinguisher train, they can call the office at six oh one four four two seven zero two one, or they can call me at six oh one four four three seven eight six two. And we're waiting still for the state to bring us some smoking on, so we can go ahead and finish putting some, putting the rest of those out. Uh, they've been, but they're supposed to get in touch with us in, I guess, the next month or so, uh, they're gonna bring them down to us when they, when they get them in. And that, that's all I have.
All right, now, appreciate it. All right, we appreciate what you do.
All right.
Uh, good morning, board.
Good morning.
Uh, I have two things today, uh, I'll start with the first one, it's dealing with the cameras at the pool. Uh, at one point, the line for the cameras was disconnected, it, it was believed to AT&T hit those lines when they was digging in that area. Uh, we tried turning it out and can't get a connection to the camera. So, I called, uh, the company that did it before, Mr. Harapool, uh, to see what was going on with that. And he said, we could rebury it, but with, with the other banner, they're, um, we got called over from Riverside Computer Solutions, uh, they said they can do it wirelessly for much cheaper than without, than what it would have been if we had to rebury it. And also, for future purposes, if they ever had to dig again, that wouldn't happen again. And so, what I have here, and it's within the budget as well, uh, the quote that I have received was fifteen hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And I was wanting you all approval to go ahead through with that project, and I already notified, uh, they won't be paid until the project is fully completed.
Who was it, again?
Uh, it's Riverside Computer Solutions.
You say it's in the budget?
Yes.
What's that, do you have address on the, uh, computer?
Uh, for Margaret Avenue.
All right, uh, you heard the request of the IT tech, can I get a motion?
Don't move.
It's been properly moved by supervisor Gray. I get, it's been properly settled by supervisor Hutchins. Would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you, you sign an I. Interposed, may they have the same right.
I do have discussion.
Discussion.
Have you verified that every area of that pool is covered by these cameras that they used to leave? Just with what Miss Miller came to us earlier, I wanna make sure that there's not cameras that need to be added while we're doing this.
Uh, it has a very, very coverage, uh, from what I've seen, it covers pretty much every area. Um, let's see, I probably would have to do a double check on it, because it's like, I think it's like seventeen, eighteen camera, and it has very, very good coverage, I don't think there was any blind spots from what I've seen.
Parking lot as well?
Uh, yeah, that's one point, so parking lot and that was currently functioning.
That's all, all right, thank you.
All right.
All in favor, vote by you, you sign an I. Interposed, may they have the same right, motion carried unanimous.
All right, uh, my second idea is, I, I was talking with the directors, and they agreed that it would be a great idea. Uh, I was wanting to implement a work order system, uh, for the county, uh, it will give me a better eye on what work orders we have, how much we were given, and how quickly they are being completed. Uh, and it's, uh, for a price, it is four ninety-two a year, and that is within the budget as well.
You said a work order, so when people call in and need a problem, or have a problem with a computer, whatever?
Yeah, and they can.
It'll be documented.
Yeah, it'll be documented, and they can submit it as well.
And just like what we do with the road department, constituent calls in, we have a marking of the tracks, who's done what and whatever.
Yeah, I, I, it's been properly moved by supervisor Gray and properly settled by supervisor, uh, Hutchins, yeah. All in favor, vote by you, you sign an I. Interposed, may they have the same right, motion carried unanimous.
Thank you, and also, I just wanted to inform you, uh, we're definitely moving towards, uh, we're moving away from emails to fax to just regular fax, uh, for the departments that wanted it. We have already started with this office here, uh, so the copy here is there, there's just these normal faxes. And so, this, uh, project is going, is going well as well.
Okay, we're keeping an eye, I didn't hear what you were saying.
Oh, uh, we're moving away from emails to fax to just standard fax for the departments that, that wants it. Uh, and we already started that project, and this was the first building that has already been implemented, so you are able to use the copy of this regular fax.
So, Mr. President, so when you say the departments are moving from email to fax, that mean dealing with businesses outside of Adams County? I mean, in this community, not dealing with us?
Uh, it, it, it's just within the departments itself, it's just a method of faxing. Uh, so, before, in order to send a fax, you get it through your computer, basically. Uh, it was not through your email to send a fax, well, several departments did like that. So, now they wanna just use their copy here to just fax it to you.
I got a question on that too.
Yes.
Uh, they still have to put in that last four digits, or just fax it out?
Yeah, it's just, you just type in a number, and you just fax it out.
Okay.
All right. Have the, uh, time clocks been reinstated at the pool?
Oh, yes, yeah, uh, yeah, they, it was just frozen, I just went and restarted it. Uh, once they notified me that it wasn't working, I went right out there and got that open door.
All right, thank you, Brandon.
You're welcome.
Right. Next, departmental report.
Thank you.
I may have a bike with Adams County, so you missed you. Couple of four weeks ago, I came before y'all, requested some financial assistance to help us purchase a sophisticated summer unit for our boat. Uh, I got the paperwork from Mr. Slover, filled it out, turned it in, I was just kinda where we, wanted to know where we are with status today. That amount was twenty-five hundred dollars.
I don't think it's, so, we pick up appropriations in our budgeting cycle, um, I, again, that's gonna be put into those appropriations, board can review and approve at that end, I don't know if there was any issue with the board approving it, um, so I don't think it's gonna be a problem for it.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure I understood what it was, since I, I did not give y'all a figure last time. And I filled out the paperwork, did that, put that necessary information in there. With that, I'll end, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to find you.
Anybody have any questions for us?
As long as you got your paperwork in, and the board will go through the process.
You were gonna leave me a card last time, I didn't, never had a card.
I will, I've got them in my truck.
Okay, my truck's parked on the street, there's no parking zones, it's easy to find.
It was.
It was. You had to get a big record, I'll tell you that.
Thank you.
I can't mark it, I can't, because I care, you got my own spots taken up for the supervisor, so, it's a trade-off. You know, you scratch my bag, I'll scratch yours.
All right, Mr. Daisy.
All right, come on aboard.
Good morning.
Uh, Monday, my office is hosting a youth CPR class, um, resident nurse, market legal, be conducting a youth CPR class for youth seven to eighteen years of age, um, we first came to the idea of having it, 'cause y'all members of this, NFL football player, Damar Hamlin, had, had a cardiac arrest on a football field, and my, myself and some of my coworkers thought it would be a good idea to have youth learn how to do basic CPR, so they, they'll be on Monday, uh, June twenty-sixth, at the Adams County Station Office from nine AM to one, you know, let's not fly with, um, Corvette, but, um, it's limited to twenty kids, so far, we already got eleven kids, it's gonna be twenty dollars for youth, but be free for current, uh, four ages. So, they'll be to learn all the basic CPR, um, skills, you never know, they may save somebody's life, um, by doing the training.
Okay, I was, I was gonna say something to Shriek, I was saying her lifeguards already have all that training, but she's already left, so, because that would've been great if some person did not have that. But she, it should be, because some of them.
Hopefully.
That's something people need to touch up on, so, uh, I think I hadn't done it in four years.
They do that every year, in fact, they have.
Yeah, they can, they can call my office at six oh one four four five eight two one. Yeah, they can, they can call my office at six oh one four four five eight two one, bless you, um, to register. And, um, like, right now, there's an offer with ten, so they got like ten more spots there, so they have to call kind of quickly.
What's that number?
Uh, six oh one four four five eight two oh one. Yeah, we limit to, uh, twenty kids, but so far, we have ten, so it's free for, um, per foragers, but non-foragers have to pay twenty dollars.
Okay, and what'd you say that age was?
Uh, seven to eighteen, um, years of age, as January first.
Okay, oh, thank you.
Uh, thank y'all.
Anything else?
What's the, what age group is it?
Uh, seven to eighteen, as January first. It's going to be starting nine o'clock on Monday, twenty-sixth to one o'clock. We provide lunch.
All right, we appreciate it, man.
And with that...
This is Jack.
How's it going? Maybe a couple minutes, though. All right, I'm here for two different reasons, and I guess I'll wait for the one to come back to talk about one of them. We're opening proposals again for our Adams County Home and Project, for legal, uh, for asbestos and weather inspection, and for engineering surveying. And once again, I received no proposals for engineering and surveying, so I'll get with the missing corporation. Maybe I can just, since this will be the third time, maybe I can just solicit. I'm not sure legally what I can do, I don't need to get with Scott them. Uh, we actually have two proposals here for asbestos inspection, and then one for legal, which is Scott. So that'll be easy for y'all to score, Scots, and then, uh, I went ahead, and I'll give y'all Scots here. Scoring load.
Okay, well, Scots is for what, legal?
This is for, uh, title payments on the homes.
You know what free legal works for, or what you pay for it?
I don't guess I'll really actually, it's the proposal.
Well, this is, I, I do it for our family.
You need, uh, probably Scots, we can score, unless we know...
You want to read that, you told us.
Yeah. We just kind of have enough score, if we don't know what...
We, we already, in no way.
All right, so this is just supposed to be based on just experience, and that's supposed to be based on... There's a limit.
Okay.
I'll let, I'll make scallery that, I can't remember what it is. There's a limit, they only allow for certain amounts of these inspections and legal policies, uh... I'll hand it south to them, I'll give y'all this proposal for the asbestos inspection.
For the legal work for the government, so.
I went ahead, wrote them in, I'm handling it, just to say downtown, I would have been myself, I would have sat down over there.
You want to take that?
Yeah. These are, these two are arguing about what the score is going to be. Not at all.
You take bump it up. I'm hot now.
Oh, you're hot?
Yes.
But she's the only one, we took a vote, and everybody else was cold, so she lost. We're going, we're going to get her a fan.
I'm seventy-two or something.
Don't say it, it's...
We gotta do this.
I'm seventy-three.
What's that?
We have to mute it.
And now, it's on.
Wait, that's why, I will say this.
I got one, you just gave it to me.
Uh, AEC, we've actually used quite often on these home projects, so we're familiar with them. That's not to say this other firm is, what else is Pearson Environmental Services.
Pass these out, man, uh, I guess, over the meeting, I haven't changed a bit.
That's fine.
That's Pearson. I like Pearson, but they're short.
Right.
I don't understand this back page, you might have to tell me what this means. Says eight hundred dollars, and it says fifteen.
Oh, the guy told me, I told him not to put prices in it, I said this is just based on experience, so if I were you, I'd just ignore the prices.
I didn't know what...
There's a limit of what they can charge anyway, so the grant allows.
I didn't know if that was a misprint.
It may be.
Because that's pretty bad. Well, we go eight hundred, and it says one price, and it says another on the other end. But he said, they could only, they can't, this company and this company both going to charge, so.
Did AEC put prices in there?
No, I didn't see it.
Okay. They, they've got a lot of experience with this team.
Is that a recommendation?
No, it is not, absolutely not.
President, I'm going to, we going to take care of Adams County business, but you know, opportunity to look over this, man. If you want me to look over, man, if you want me to rub stamp it, man, I'm not going to do that. Over, man.
All right.
That's fine. Tell us no rush. Go on, table to the next meeting, that's fine.
You have my back. All right, so, there's not a whole lot we can do with this.
Let me know where I can even look over.
No, that's fine.
All right, it's not, not in a hurry, so if y'all want to answer them and get it back to Alan, certainly can.
Okay.
And if you want to score them, then you can give a page, you can email them over to Alan, that's okay.
Okay. We heard the options that we have, some of us want to look over, um, and we do have all the information. So what we're going to do is, what else you have to present?
Uh, it's about the DRA application.
Okay.
Something similar. We'll start with that.
Go ahead.
All right, so... We had initially, I think I emailed you guys, we had initially talked about Warren's area, over on Philip West Road, Stardust Road, Hammer Drive, and Bluegrass Drive. Uh, a, a, a drainage project. Uh, but I recommended in the meantime, after going over the project, going through the scoring system and CDVG, that it just wasn't going to score well. And that's just, that doesn't mean it's not a good project, just the way CDVG scores things, I just determined it, it just wasn't going to score well, it'd be that competitive. So, I told Warren, we have DRA coming up, which is actually due Friday. Uh, how about I work on that instead for this project, we agree that might be a good option. So, still no guarantee. Uh, the good news is... With CDVG, it was going to be at least a fifty percent match, to make it even remotely competitive, which would have been in the five hundred thousand dollar range. I would recommend with DRA, I think I set a twenty percent match, which comes out to roughly... Uh, two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars and some change, requesting roughly eight hundred fourteen thousand dollars from DRA. The, the total, uh, cost from the engineer was one billion, uh, eighty-six thousand dollars, eighty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. So I broke it, for the twenty percent match, this, y'all's match would be roughly two hundred and seventy-one thousand. I think in the email, I was a little, I was off. But, uh, anyway, so I got a match resolution, if you want me to proceed with this. Uh, filled out, filled out most of the application, it's all online, uh, it's a real easy process. They, they do ask for a match resolution to show that the county is committed to the project, so that's what I'm here for. Y'all want to discuss that?
Uh, if, if it's accepted, I mean, then at that time, we can make the determination whether we're going to go through with it or not. Or are we doing it today?
What do you, what do you mean?
When, when we, if we agree, uh, or make a motion to approve what you're asking for now. Okay, let's say we do get the grant, and things change, and our finances, we can't do it. Is there an out, or are we just, we're...
Absolutely, there is. I can just contact the DRA and say this is what's happening in February.
So, we're just giving you permission to apply for it.
That's right.
Okay.
We'll go apply with a match, so.
I will match, so I will ask for a motion to apply with the, for the DRA grant for the drains project, what's the name of Philip West?
What's that?
What's the name of the drains project?
I just named it Adams County Drains Project.
Adams County Drains Project on Philip West, with a fifty percent match, can I get them up?
Oh.
They're properly moved by Supervisor Gray and properly settled by Supervisor Hudson, but it be in a discussion? There be no discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of "I"? In a poll, may they have the same right. And, uh, Mr. Larry, I know you said, oh, that we need probably some support letters.
I would love some support letters, anything like that.
You can give them, well...
Photographs you submitted, great, I'd love more photographs.
Yeah, well, I had those photographs I had when, uh, when I probably got in, and we were going to do, it looks like right by Kevin. It looks like a river over there, so I'm pretty much sure I can get some letters, give you some good support letters, let me flood it out.
Did you do it this week?
This week?
You got to have it by Friday, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I'll get on to that.
All right, do you need my help?
I mean, yeah, well, I mean, we probably need to just tell me what they need or whatever, if you would, and, uh, we can go, if you got time. We can meet, you can just give me the description of what they need, and we can go from there.
Okay.
All right. All right, all right.
Do I need to stick around to the end of the meeting, or, or y'all going to just come back later at some point and email me the, uh, score sheets?
You stick around, I guess, but, you know, immediately, it was not, uh, pay, pay to be, uh, email it to you.
Okay. You need me to score sheet too, or just this? Okay.
Robert, I think we're ready for you.
I'm sorry, Robert, I'm done.
Yes, sir.
One more.
All right, good morning.
Uh, well, first thing on my list, you took care of that Mr. Danny, the tree of Cullin, so that's okay. Uh... Next thing I have is... Uh... A budget amendment. And I have it, uh, no media to talk to, um, Brandy, Brandy's not here, I'm not supposed to miss page about it. And it's moving funds from, uh... Fund number one six zero dash three hundred dash five one eight. Moving seven thousand dollars from that fund to fund one zero six dash three hundred dash six three five.
All right.
Tell me what are these fund, I mean, what we...
I'm moving it from, uh... That fund to dirt, we need more dirt, you know, our funds, we're running out of dirt, dirt has went up in price since we started, um... With our budget, then we got our yearly prices, so we've gone up from what we're getting to fifty cents, either a dollar fifty a yard now, dirt. So we're using a lot of dirt throughout the county, so that's where we're, uh, doing it. Give this to, they like to say...
I wonder if I would have...
Well, I read the fund numbers out, but I don't give it to her here. And she had talked to Brandy too, I think Friday.
I just wanted to know what they were.
Friday.
When you say those funds, I want to know it.
Correct.
It is.
Honestly, and I was like, Brandy normally does it, her media working, but except Brandy wasn't here today, so...
Yeah.
Uh, she wanted me to do it. The other thing...
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry.
That, that ain't your fault, we're getting straight to what I'm going to do next time we get a motion in a second, then we're discussing it, we won't get off track.
All right.
All right, now, I need a motion for, you heard the request of the Roman agent, and I already talked to the acting administrator, can I get a motion? They're properly moved by Supervisor Wilson, I guess that's it. Properly settled by Supervisor Milton, that'd be in a discussion, any more discussion? There be no more discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of "I"? In a poll, may they have the same right, motion carried now. All right, move, what you move for?
Thank you, sir. Uh... Next thing I have is, um, striping. You know, we, uh, opened bids on our striping, selected the contractor for it. Um, I had mentioned before, when we got the striping prices, when we started the asphalt project, that it would be, uh, a hundred... A hundred and eighty-four thousand, I tell you, I'd probably double it, went to three forty-seven, eight ninety, was the contractor we selected to do the striping. With that being said, uh, with our money that we had on asphalt project and our bond money, I need to get a... PO or fund number set up, where I can issue a PO to the striping contractor.
Just a question, in it to move asphalt, from asphalt into, uh, striping.
Correct, and I made the last, and with that being said, it just goes hand in hand with it.
It's all same moving?
Yeah. As far as asphalt, I've got a final payment here on that, so we're clear there, so we can't transfer the money.
Okay, for the asphalt, need a motion for the, uh... Asphalt and striping to transfer the money, uh, into the separate fund so they can get a PO, can I get a motion?
Sir.
They're properly moved by Supervisor Milton, and properly settled by Supervisor Wilson, but it be in a discussion? There be no discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of "I"? In a poll, may they have the same right, motion carried now.
Thank you. And I guess Paige, you would get us a fund number for, get a PO?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, I got with Supervisor Middleton on this, on five hundred overboard. Uh, we had a discussion at our last board meeting by EWP, and I did get Mr. Middleton, uh, supervising that area, and get him the information that I think we were looking for. Uh... I had two employees, I had one, uh, turned in his letter of resignation, you have it, Mr. Joe, Joseph Vincent. His last day employment was six seven, two thousand twenty-three.
Have.
And then I had another one, I got back this morning, then I had a foreman let me know, I had an employee left Thursday. Uh, his name is, uh, Maurice Thornburg.
I have him.
Last day employment was six fifteen, two thousand three. They both left for better paying jobs. So with that being said, I ask the board, can I commission to advertise for their position?
You heard the request of the Roman agent? So, uh, and the motion is to accept his resignation and to be able to hire, uh, for the, for their position. They've been, they were moved by Wilson and settled by Hudson, uh, but there be no more discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of "I"? In a poll, may they have the same right, motion carried now.
The M dot project, sign project for Kingston Road is, uh, pretty much complete. We, uh, we got two more signs to put up. We, uh, we got two more signs to put up, where M dot had staked on where the resident removed two states. They didn't like where they were located by their house, so they removed them, uh, so we got to get M dot back to remark those two states for us, so we will do that. And we have a few more bright sticks to put up on some stop signs, and then that guy will be complete. And I'm on M dot for that, I know the county does for supplying the signs and marking those for us, because those have been really helpful in other areas that we don't need projects, and other we can't continue on, with a good working relationship with M dot, getting them to provide us the signs. That's all I have, um, does the board have anything for me?
Uh, just, I mean, I see it's probably trying to ride this even in the morning, I just got two things that I want to go look at. Uh, yeah, just a few calls, call, uh, during the weekend, a little riding during the weekend. I, I, I seen some, uh, few things that we definitely need to get on top of and take care of. Pretty quick, especially with the rain, because I seen some deep washouts and stuff like that, all right on the edge of some of the roads, and I, you know, we need, we'll ride and look at them and get that.
Correct.
Anybody else?
I know y'all know Friday, we have work that's going on too, uh, we were busy Friday, um, had a couple of things this weekend, not much. Uh, this morning, I did take a different route from work, I come Palestine, lived the road that way this morning. First thing, run into a tree there, and the road crossroads, I get the shot coming again. We got different moves, so I guess it's that time of year, things get separated from dry and falling, so, uh, but they've been working, and they can get.
Yes. Uh, Robbie, um, you made some dirt water, five dirt, but, uh, how are we coming on, maybe moving the trees and getting our own dirt pit?
That's a discussion a little bit for the meeting today, me and Scott was talking about it, uh, come to find out that land is a joint. And with the city and county owns that property, uh, I think Scott, my director, won't give it to the city, the city buy it. Might be going to join, I've heard of, because they have to buy dirt, so the city don't have a pity. So we did, went in for both.
Yeah, we're covered, ours, I don't know, it's to probably them, so.
But that's what we.
Land, yeah, for them then.
And I have, yeah, you know, some other resources if we have to, but as far as that.
Robbie, I haven't looked at this, but I got a, uh, I was gonna say I tossed it, but that would be the correct word, by Princess of the La Fiesta. She lives on Twenty Four Salmon Road.
Twenty four what?
Salmon Road. She said when it rains, when they come through there, I don't know, it's when they hit, uh, South Palestine, or she said, they have to take a detour, basically, there's so much water coming across the road, and I don't know if there's a car stopped up somewhere in that area, or, or, or what, like I said, I have not been out there looking at that. She just, uh, talked to me about this Friday. She was so happy.
She said Princess, she's gotta be coming off of Kingston, coming out.
Is it Salmon Road, I think she said Salmon Road.
That's probably a ride.
Yeah. They did, I don't know if we need to ride out there and try to figure out what she's talking about, we'll, we'll see the grass lay over, if something's jumping the road.
Yeah, okay. All right, this is why I ran past her house, we got to put a crossroad in for sure.
Okay.
But that would be, hey, me and Ms. Hudson, we looked at it, me and you and Mr. White looked at that, and we were going to set the road up and put a bigger pipe in under that road, no?
That's fine.
Right there, but that's past everybody, but I looked and see, but it's right in that area, but I, I'm.
Okay.
All right, any more, say Roman manager?
Oh, yeah, just, Rob, a reminder, I got a bridge on high.
Yeah.
All right, well, we appreciate it. Uh, next departmental reports.
Good morning, boys.
How you doing?
Just a couple of items. Just a reminder that we will be opening up bids for the E W P for Magnolia Bluff, two and three, on July the third, first board meeting in July. Uh, for the striping project, S A P O one nine to home, I'm assuming that State A received a check for the account department guy involved, and they found an error in the board order that was submitted, took by State A, so State A submitted a new board order to get signed by the president. And once they get that board order back, then they'll go get an award, let the project go forward. So hopefully we get the project starting first of July.
Do you got the board order today?
E W P, I don't know.
You got board order? What is the correction?
I don't know, he didn't tell me, just said, he said he didn't.
I do have the board order in my hand, with the necessary correction, can I get a motion?
Yeah, this is a motion to the man you previously.
Motion to a man.
Still vote on this motion, but.
To men is, uh.
Even what previous minutes?
The previous minutes, yeah. They're properly moved by Supervisor Hudson, properly settled by Supervisor Wilson, will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using the sign of I. End of poll made that same right, motion carried now.
All right, the last thing I have to have is, you know, we asked, last on the back, we've been asking board, we need the organization to submit for the, um, the Safe Roads for Alls project. I think I printed wrong document actually. Um, we, when we looked at the, the, through the grant, we realized the county had a twenty percent match for this project. I need to pull up the right document. Um, so the roads that were on that project were Kingston Road, Liberty Road, Cranfield Road.
This grant that we. So State Safe Road, Robert had listed, I came up, and he applied for a total grant for Safe Roads, and Robert had got the, uh, information from M dot and all the rest and stuff like that.
Yeah, myself too, at the last meeting.
Yeah, it was, yeah, yeah. I think more than part of most.
Yeah, so Morgantown Road, Kingston Road, Liberty Road, Cranfield Road, the North Palestine Road, with the old that was, as I said, submitted. And I'll email the correct one, uh, once I get back to the office. And the total for those projects were, it was sixteen million dollars, sixteen point seventy dollars for the whole lane, restryping, and signing of those roads to address safety issues with the crashes and the lane departures. And the county will be responsible for twenty percent of that, eighty percent will come from the funding from the grant approved, which would be the amount of thirteen point four million dollars, so the county's match would be three point three five million dollars. So I just wanted to know, you know, if y'all want me to move forward, submit for those five roads, that you guys want to look at those roads and.
I imagine it's going to be the same way, if something happens and we couldn't fund it, then we can, uh, you can submit to not, uh, so, uh, because there's no guarantee on that application, so I'm going to ask for a motion to move forward and, uh, to measure. It's been properly moved by Supervisor, uh, properly moved by Supervisor Hudson, can I get a second? Proper settled by Supervisor Wilson, will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using the sign of I. End of poll made that same right, motion carried now.
Um, are there any questions for me while I'm here?
Question, can you answer the question?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Now, we discussed that the, uh, the water grant had got approved for D F D, uh, well, what are we going to do now to get that, uh, project started?
Um, once we get the organization's letter back from the N C W I representative, and then they'll tell us what the next step is.
Okay.
I know, um, with the city, most we got approved for that Morgantown Road project, you should be able to pay out and go in to advertise the project once it's ready, and then let us know once it's already awarded, and be out and anything like that. So I really have to be the next step, then once I get the letter back from the, because I submit the signed documents now, and when you get the documents, it's due by Tuesday. And then we should be able to move forward, I guess, after writing the services on the in-house project.
Okay, so. All right, thank you.
All right, if there, any more questions? If there be no questions, uh, next departmental reports.
I appreciate you, sir.
Thank you.
Good morning, board. I've got one new hire, called Sarah Davis, as a deputy sheriff.
Oh, that's a long one, I'm thinking. I do have a necessary check of work, and Sarah Davis, that sheriff, death in sixteen eighty-one an hour. Uh, can I get a motion?
So.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hudson. Proper settled by Supervisor Milton, will there be any discussion?
Question. Are we gonna run this through the, uh, the guy just left from here talking about, whatever he was talking about, uh, can we run this uh, hire through there where we can get at least six months of their salary paid by, uh, the young club and office, the club and office, can we do that?
I'm not sure, because I'm, that, if, uh, I guess we have to give it to the ministry, I don't need more clarification. If we could, but I'm not familiar with that program, so I'm not.
Scott, they have, they have done through them before, so you can go through that. Scott, what do we need to do to get back on board with, with them, where when we hiring employees, that they pay so much, uh, I think it's six months, whatever it may be, what do we need to do to get back on board with them? Because we started hiring and we not communicating with them, so we paying the whole salary where they could be paying some of the salary.
But, let me, let me say this, he did say that we won't have any more funds till July.
No, that's on, that's on another one, that's on another one.
Yeah, they'll, it's for training, it's help training, and oftentimes, they say it's up to six months, but they may not give it a week or whatever, just depending on how much training they actually do. We talked to the sheriff in the past about it, told him we need to set up a training program, and that they go through, it that gives you increasing chances that you'll do it. How do you accomplish that, again, like it was said in full of board, county administrator, acting county administrator needs to communicate with that person, and find out what the logistics is if you can done, so.
Well, the only thing I'm saying is this, we've been talking about this for how many years since we dropped the program? Since Joe left.
Yeah.
Now we need to get it back, if it's some funds gonna help pay for at least, at least six months, that's money we save in our account.
Let me say this Supervisor Gray, the man just left here, he's up there with the, uh, human resource person to get this corrected, so, uh, she would know exactly what to do now.
Only thing I'm saying is, she wasn't even here.
Well, that's why he discussing it with her.
He act like he wasn't even clear.
I want.
I mean, what we talked about, I, I don't know where.
Yeah, they, y'all did it in the past, y'all just was going through them. What he, what, what he said is, when this happened, when we hire somebody, the human resource person is supposed to submit it to them. So that's why he's up there now discussing it with her, of what she's supposed to do. He's going over it with her, with, once she get the paperwork of a new hiring, to, to submit it to them.
Okay.
Okay, what's his name, this person?
Sarah Davis.
Okay, we don't start with Sarah Davis.
And then we have, uh.
There's another one hired today too.
Was it, uh, uh, was she replacing somebody, it is in the budget? Right, this is a need hire, but she's replacing somebody else.
Let me ask Supervisor King, I have a question for the attorney.
Go ahead.
Can we do any hiring six months out of an election? I thought we not supposed to do any hiring either.
Well, thank you.
It depends on what you're hiring for, so, they take it, if you're talking about your road crew, you take an average of three months for the past four years, and so you probably can't go hire twenty different people, uh, that, your, 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 your budget has to stay within that same, same amount for the road crew, that's what I'm not aware, I'm not aware of.
I think it's the road department and the sheriff department, and I.
I'm not aware of that, I can pull that and see that.
Yeah.
I'd send it.
Because if it's an emergency, I think it's for.
I know, we discussed that in our conference this past week up there.
That's why I want to make sure we not see the hiring, we not supposed to be.
Y'all got to do. Y'all know you probably should hire sheriff, yeah.
That's why I assume the sheriff and the road department.
I know we are, I don't.
Yeah, vacancy, yeah. So. So, is that?
That for me, then me, it was on seventy-one. And I, and I moved it seventy-two, is it not on seventy-two?
It's on seventy-two. All right.
Somebody can get you a friend.
Yeah, yeah.
My love, my love, she's fine.
All right, well, can we move forward, uh, Ms. Davis? Uh, we got the motion, now we need to move forward with the vote. All in favor vote by using the sign of I. End of poll made that same right, motion carried now.
I can get out, just so we won't have to wear a helmet. Or getting chewed out for it.
That's it? That's it? I got a question. I know those cameras. Okay. Broadmore. I know they've been working on a few, and we've been working on it for some, some months, I know, and we have kind of, has there been any update with the other ones?
So I found something in the minutes where we made a motion to increase the I T budget to purchase cameras to Broadmore.
Yeah, it was there, and, and I tell you what, and I might have been off, but I think when Ricky came, I also think we, um, did a camera for country club, with the sheriff, we had a lot of problem with people dumping our old country club over there. You got that one on that? So, so it was there too, so those ones, we, we did, if you would, can you find out for Major Smith, uh, when we get those, those cameras?
Okay.
Yeah.
So I know we had two put on the sheriff's office, one at Justice Court, one at the D A's office, and we were having some issues with the, the I T part of the camera, and I think Brandon worked with them on that. Uh, I was told they did get piled to the one on Providence. Now, I don't know about the one in Kingston, but they were working on it too.
Uh, I think the problem there, and I, and I, I don't know this, Scott, you might can tell, uh, the one on, it, it Providence costs like seven or eight hundred dollars just to hook the power up, and I, we didn't take bid, bids, or should we take bids on hooking these cameras up, because if, if they just go out there and just say, well, two thousand dollars to hook the camera, just the wiring, I'm talking about just the electric door.
You go through purchasing, and they would make sure that you cash your legal requirements, and I think under five thousand dollars, you don't have to did that.
I talked to Johnny about it last week, I think there's money, Johnny wanted to address that, there were six, five or six cameras that didn't, and they were gonna get bid.
Well, is that five thousand dollars for all of them to be hooked up, or five thousand dollars each, I mean.
For one transaction.
One transaction, okay.
Now, if you start, if you start making it into one transaction, so the intent of certain event bidding law, that's illegal.
No.
But if you're, in this instance, we have Providence, which is a different organization, or a different, whatever you want to call it, then you got Broadmore, which is a different, you know, I mean, if the intent's not to certain event bidding, then you're fine, you're taking it individually, if you're like, well, this is going to reach that, so we're going to do this, can't do that, so that makes sense. Now, probably, because each product should be different, it's a different scope of work, it's not like it's identical amount.
That's why they need to bid it, and why I would think they need to make estimate on each one, because they are different, everyone's going to be different.
It just depends if legally, whether you mean it or not, you know, you can go ahead and get multiple people, even close on it, but. I thought it was like eight hundred dollars for what we.
That's for a camera.
I had a meeting with Milton this morning, he said he wants to see about having one put at Living Park at the pool.
About what you talked about. That's what I was going, if you would just check, because we had one, it was supposed to have seen the pool and the safe room.
Okay, okay. Well, when I, when I was asking Brandon about the camera in the parking lot, the, Sharika was back there shaking her head, and he did not pick up that view of the parking lot, which is where most of the problems, the problem happened anyway.
Right, right.
Oh, so, yeah.
Just, just check on it, check on the cameras, check on the cameras.
I checked on it, and if we would have a get it before, for the next meeting. All right, we, thank you. Uh, any more, any more public, no more departmental reports, public comments? If there be no more, uh, public comments, we ask come to the table, Supervisor Gray.
Mr. Senator, President. Uh, as we know, we are getting closer and closer to budget time in, uh, next month. Let's see where we go with it. This is the end of June, next month deadline for returning departmental requests. And the end of July, we be reviewing departmental requests, so I hope everybody is, uh, taking care of their business. Thanks, we got, uh, interim county administrator, uh.
I gather this request went out, so if you want additional funds, you just submit them.
If you wanna have less funds, let us know too.
People always want something new or something different, and they're gonna need to request it to the board, who else can do it?
Well, I think everybody, but you're gonna come in, should come in about your, uh, July first.
If it doesn't, don't complain.
Then you're supposed to do what you need to do.
Alright.
And, uh, as you know, I'm a member of the, uh, transportation committee, and I think we need to look at, uh, trying to get this planning grant, which is one hundred percent funded, and I think we need to, uh, come up with a comprehensive plan for the county. Uh, I think it's a deadline, I'm gonna try to find a deadline, already, uh, he would pass it on to Allen or somebody to, to apply for this grant. Uh, it's one hundred percent funded, the planning stages of the grant is one hundred percent funded. Uh, I did answer these questions on this audit paper, but I guess we don't know if it's up. Uh, in our conference, we did talk about, uh, purers. Uh, I, I don't know how we gonna handle purers, uh, even though the increase or whatever may not happen till, uh, next year. Scott, do you think it's a possibility that we gonna have to try to put something in our budget to try to handle the increase that we gonna have with purers?
Absolutely, you're gonna have to put what your estimated cost per person's gonna cost us, and it'll be different than last year's, of this fiscal year's budget. Uh, it goes up every year, I think twenty-two and a half percent, what it's gonna eventually get to, and purers keeps on going up. It's a great system for retirement, but also costs the county, you know, some money and employees money.
So that's gonna be one of our major things we deal with during the budget period, and also, uh, me personally, I think we need to find a way, if we have the funding, because I know we got a lot of funding back to, uh, give our employees a, a raise. Uh, because every time, seem like somebody coming here, they losing their employees, they going other places, and other places are raising the salary of their employees. So, you know, it was always my goal to make sure that, well, our goal to make sure that county employees have a living wage still their minimum wage. So, we gonna have to find a way to, uh, get our employees some more money. And, uh, this conference that we got coming up next month, they got three major things that they dealing with. Streamlining the federal permitting process, technical assistance opportunity for federal infrastructure investment, and the most important one to me is improving transportation safety. And, uh, we got quite a few unsafe areas in our community, and, uh, we need to try to do our best to improve those areas. Last. I did attend it, the, uh, Juneteenth recognition of some honorities in this community, and out of this community, it was a very nice event. But we still have some, uh, individual I think was left out, and I, I don't think there was intentionally left out, but we do have some, uh, individual that I would like to see this board recognize myself, and I'm gonna get the information and come at the next board meeting to make sure he gets some recognition before he leave here. Because he, he, he way up in age, I'm not gonna call his name right now. And, uh, I think we had a very successful conference down there on the coast, and, uh, oh.
Uh, leave that for me.
Yes, ma'am, and, uh. My sympathy goes out to, uh, the Green family, the Craver family, the Williams family, the Nova family, Rogers family, and Harrison family, and the Young family. And, uh, Mr. President, I think, uh, that concludes my report.
Alright, Ms. Hutchins.
Okay, I had, I had to tell Supervisor Gray, it makes sense, I have taken care of all the other business through, uh, best of the meeting. But, uh, at the, like Supervisor Gray said, uh, we did have a good conference, and it was a lot that we learned. Um, we did have a ceremony, a graduation ceremony, I think Supervisor Gray have this, uh, particular right here, I left my in the office. But we had, uh, four of the supervisors here on board that graduated from, uh, MAS, Mississippi Association of Supervisors. And what we did is we had to take, uh, courses, we had to attend classes that had, I think we had had like thirty, uh, electives in, uh, in so many court courses, so we all did, uh, complete those elective court courses, and we ended up graduating on Thursday. Uh, it was like, it's like four hundred and eighty supervisors.
Ten, fourteen.
Four-ten, and we only had like a hundred and fifty, something like that, but thirty-one.
One, one thirty-three.
One hundred and thirty-three to graduate, so I think that was really good for, you know, us to be able to, uh, graduate. And, um, we had a good, uh, remin there that talked about, uh, deputy towers and towers. So I, I want to say that I think this board is not a deputy town, we are a town, which a deputy town means you just not doing anything. You just sit there and be pretty, and I think this board here is a town that, uh, doing some things that is always used. So I want to commend the board on the graduation and also being a town, not a deputy town.
Well, I think y'all are also very pretty too, so.
Right, but another thing is, I, I want to agree with Supervisor Gray too also on the races, because they did talk about employee races, because they did talk about how inflation has gone up so high at that meeting, and that they would like to see all supervisors give their employees raises because of the inflation. You cannot continue to, uh, you know, be at that, that still with inflation's as high as they are today. And if you go in stores and look around, inflation's have jumped sky high, or, you know, over five percent, uh, what we're talking about. So those are some of the things I want to bring up, and that's all I have, President Davis.
President Gang, before, before you move to President Milton, I just want to add something to this, I'm gonna pat myself on the back, can I do that, please?
Yes, sir.
Well, with this, with this, uh, certificate, it, it mean a whole lot to me, and I'm gonna tell you why, because, uh, I always, no matter what I do, I want to be the best, in order to be the best, you're gonna have to get the right wisdom, understanding, and knowledge of what you're doing. So when I was with the city, I was the first to get this with the city, and now I got one with the county. So that, that don't make me an expert on county government, but it do widen your, your range and knowledge of, of what you're supposed to be doing. Because no offense to nobody, Angela, don't take this personally, but when I first got elected, when I went to my first winter conference, they was using Adams County how to not to do stuff. I don't want to ever be a part of that again, because I, 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 I don't want to ever be a part of the whole state using us how to not to do something. So I want to make sure that we stay on board and stay within the guidelines and the rules of what we supposed to be doing, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. I just want to make one necessary correction with you, Wes is the past president, I'm the president, and.
What you talking about?
When you said you.
You said President Gang, before you let President Milton go.
Before you let President. Go ahead, uh, Supervisor Wilson.
Um, I have a few things, uh, the gentleman that was here with red pest, uh, there was a renewal that came up last board meeting, and I think, uh, we will weigh our options there, so do we need a motion to put this out in bid?
When I weigh your option, I thought we just renewed the red pest.
That was termite, but I'm talking about the pest side of it.
Yeah, that is not required to be bid.
No.
That's our.
We already, we already did that.
No, he talking about the other.
He talking about the service.
I'm talking about the other service, the other company that sprayed in the buildings where we're having issue, that, I believe that was a contract that was up.
Just direct your purchasing to, to get us some quotes and various, you don't want to get that out to service.
All we did was pay red pests at this time.
We had thrown a termite or red pests, the rodents and whatnot.
But, but last meeting, we are, we are, we made the motion to not renew the contract.
But we need to put out.
We need to say.
Yeah, definitely, okay, got you.
So, um, we've been talking about the, uh, somebody monitored the St. Catherine Utility Authority, I have spoken with that person, uh, they're checking with their employer, I don't want to give that name out until they find out if they're, they're okay to do it.
Okay.
So I hope to have some before next meeting. Um, also, I had the opportunity to meet Mr. Tommy Jones at the, uh, conference last week. He is the chairman for the Association of County Road Managers, and, uh, he was very complimentary of Meg and what Meg has done, and I, I requested that in writing. Uh, and he just sent this letter that said, last year where we voted and elected Ms. Meg Freeman as our new secretary, since joining our association, this Freeman has proven to be the right candidate for our association. For the first time ever, we have had every road manager in the state pay their dues, she was also instrumental in our association gaining sponsorship from ten different vendors from across our great state. As a result of her actions, our association is in better shape than it has ever been, I wanted to write this and thank you for allowing Ms. Freeman the chance to help all of us with her efforts. In our last session Tuesday, we had officer elections, Mr. Robbie Dollar was elected as our treasurer. With Robbie and Meg working together daily, we anticipate great things for our association. Thank you again for allowing Meg and Robbie not just the opportunity to represent Adams County, but also to represent us within the Road Managers Association. And that was addressed to the entire board, but, uh, I think, I thought all along it'd be very, uh, beneficial to Adams County to have Meg involved in these conversations that go on throughout the Road Managers Association that would help us in the end, so I just, I think she deserves a recognition, and I want everybody to know how strongly they felt about her, and that concludes my report.
Well, that, that is really nice.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Mr. President, what you're doing.
We pretty much handled everything that I was, so I have written down, there's some, I'm gonna turn it over.
I'm gonna move to Deputy Clerk, please, Dean.
Alright, so let's see, I need a motion to approve the May tax reduction settlement.
Alright, you heard the request, that is.
So.
Oh, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins and properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson, uh, would there be any discussion? Is there be no discussion? All in favor, vote by using the sound aye? Any opposed, Major Smith, same right, motion carried and that.
I have the engagement letters from the auditor for their, uh, services for our two thousand twenty-two audit, that just needs to be signed by the President.
You heard the request of, uh, Deputy Clerk, can I get a motion?
So.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins, can I get a second?
Second.
Properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson, there be any discussion? All in favor, vote by using the sound aye? Any opposed, Major Smith, same right, motion carried and that.
And, uh, I believe Wes has a city in mind of him, is the renewal for the St. Catherine Creek Insurance Insurance. That needs approval, it's due June fourteenth.
You heard the request, Deputy. Uh, this.
I think you laid it right on top, yeah.
Okay, yeah. You heard the request of the Deputy Clerk, this insurance.
So.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins. I just said, it's been properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson, there be any discussion?
Uh, Mr. President, did it go up?
No, it's, it's still the same.
Alright, if there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sound aye? Any opposed, Major Smith, same right, motion carried and that.
Here they come, fast down, fast feet, and you put your trailer.
Oh, is it? Alright, uh, Travis, that's low.
I just got this, the pool is requesting the ability to rent out provided events, is that something the board wants to do? I can look at their rental agreement and have a form for them all to approve, is something the board wants to do?
I think we need to kind of see if we can look at that.
Yeah, um, I think we need, uh, look at this.
Yeah, see, this is gonna be a, I'll be able to tell whatever, what kind of event, so we're talking about.
Are you talking about his birthday parties, or adult parties, where we got in trouble with the liquor last time?
Alright, well, we'll, we'll change it to the next meeting, if there be fine, uh, with the rest of the board, give Scott a chance to look over it, and we'll down it on next meeting if that's okay. And that way, we'll get a chance to get with, he can get with the city if it's something, and then move forward, alright, that move forward with the next.
As we talked about, the, our bid for the feltless property was accepted, and so I need permission to get paperwork signed, so we can get the money distributed out to the required.
You heard the request of the Attorney, can I get a motion?
So.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray.
Second.
Can I get, it's been properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson, any discussion?
Yes, where the funding come from?
Uh, the proposal was in, on oh-two-six, the, uh, fiscal money.
Fiscal money?
Yes, ma'am, that was it, I just stood out there, no one, no one else thought that was a worse idea, or whatever, a better idea, actually, that was money sitting there, I could get down for it.
There be any more discussion? All in favor, vote by using the sound aye? Any opposed, Major Smith, same right, motion carried and that.
Um, we had some housekeeping items on the handbook that I snapped last meeting, uh, so we can get those cleared up and get that, that going on.
Alright, you heard the request of the Attorney.
So.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins and properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson, clear up the handbook, uh, not the handbook, uh, policy change, any discussion?
Yes, sir, could you give me just a bit, slight overview?
Sure.
Make sure.
Absolutely, I'll make sure, the first was the vacation practices filling out, you know, about, uh, anything above two hundred and forty, it's gonna be submitted to the purers. It did state that if you are, not, you are strictly speaking a grant employee, where our wages are all paid by pur, are paid by the, of the state or federal government, if that government doesn't reimburse its costs, then all of your time gets submitted to purers. There was clarification for the complaint process, uh, particularly, uh, for privileges and whatnot, particularly in that they would be filed with the clerk's office, so that we have a single point of where you file those requests, if there were times where it's handed, poured on it. There's a provision about coffee and water is being supplied as part of your terms of employment, again, that's just, just the N A T's changing, that provides, that would be a donation, so it's not, if you work here, you get water and, and coffee. We talked about the reasonable grounds of criminal activity, this previously, y'all approved it, this is actually putting it in writing. Uh, if, if you suspect that the folk funds have been stolen, an employee must contact either the sheriff's office or Mississippi Bureau of Investigation, and the county administrator, or the chanter clerk. Travel time, it just spells out about our travel policy, doesn't really reiterate anything else, it does emphasize or try to recommend people to seek reimbursement as it goes to free costs, they can still get free costs, but. It does emphasize or try to recommend people to seek reimbursement as it posed to free costs, they can still get free costs, but reimbursement, it's always preferred because it's easier for bookkeeping, a transport, a transit, bookkeeping, uh, perspective, sorry. There is a provision about if you are a county employee and you seek office at one of our Mississippi associations, we, as a board, say that that's a good thing, and your travel will be paid as part of your terms and services. So if any employee wants to hold an office, they certainly can, we encourage that. That is what I have.
Thank you, sir.
All right, that's it. Any more? That's it?
Hey, you ready to go?
Uh, all in favor, vote by using the sound aye. Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried now. All right, next guy.
Um, as far as, I was at, at my conference, uh, as well, one of the things suggested, uh, when I went to talk to them, because we have people that are requesting the personnel file, anything that kind of if and comes to the grievances and whatnot, is to have a policy regarding whether that's something that can be requested, or whether that is not something that's requested. If y'all get a consensus with it, we can then make sure that's addressed in the handbook and spelled out.
Okay.
The issue that should run is if you are one employee filing against another, and it goes into that ones, is the other person having expectation of privacy or whatever.
All right, we'll work on that.
Okay. This is a work authorization form we previously already agreed for an engineer for the Fablewood Levy Listers. Going ahead and directing that person to start that pass, and kind of just that, being safe, we get approved by the board.
Okay, it's Doug Wender, right?
Yes, sir.
You heard the request that, uh, Attorney, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins.
Second.
Proper seconded by Supervisor Wilson. Will there be any more discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sound aye. Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried now.
And then I have an item to be turned.
Welcome back. I mean, uh, we got, that one is for everybody. We got a form basically coming up, you listen up, y'all, um, a kind of form. I passing them around. For, um, supervisors, it'll be July tenth, Monday, Supervisors, magistrate clerk, circuit clerk, tax assessor, um, it will be at the convention center. Next convention center, uh, here from five P M. to eight P M. Um, so you know, we all participate in this every year. All right. Well, this is the search and registry, and then this is on the phone, he already spoke on there. Yeah, he already.
We're gonna put that, is that for next year?
Have another request here from, uh, National True and Alliance Report Estimated Savings, uh, National True, uh, we are asking your support, our agency, our mission is coming with your, uh, monetary donation of fifteen thousand dollars. So.
I'm sorry.
I think all of them, and, but I, but they in my phone, so I don't wanna make sure I won't, I won't miss anything. Grants require, uh, train, or training reimbursement, this is, uh, for Mr. Mayor Kay Dollar. Purpose is that M A D C P Conference in Austin, Mississippi, I don't watch it when it's cool, but the rest, um, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson, properly seconded by Supervisor Nelson and Wilson. Okay, any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sound aye. Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried now. New hires, uh, telecommunication, Marlon Swazin, twelve hours and sixty cents an hour, twenty-six oh eight, uh, year. Can I get a motion? That's telecommunication, that's.
A move.
It's all telecommunication. All right, it's been probably moved by Gray and seconded by Hutchins. A ready vote, all in favor, vote by using the sound aye. Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried now. All right, I need them, this is, uh, maintenance, uh, our maintenance department, uh, Mr. William Barnes. Got to be done, well, maintenance is, uh. It's twelve hours, I said, probably, so. But she just brought her own, didn't she? Hey, can you get a little bit, come here, right? All right, while we going, while we already here, dude, so while they out, I think. So I was kind of piggyback while they getting that to get on, uh, uh, the conference last week, we enjoyed it, and one thing it do show, we had a hundred and, four hundred and ten supervisors, and out of four hundred and ten, only a hundred and thirty-three graduated. So that definitely means these supervisors who left Adams County, we did go leave with a purpose to get educated and learn to do things for Adams County, to better serve Adams County citizens, and to be legal in what we do. So, you know, um, I think that says a lot for you to, our four hundred and ten people, and we all go to conference, all a hundred and thirty-three graduated. And, uh, we graduated, but, but I did learn at the conference is something that we have been talking about for, um, I guess since I got on board, and one of these things that I'll still be talking about, and, um, that's gonna be well needed is broadband in rural areas. I went to a class, um, um, well, one day, but I was at the conference, and basically what happened over a period of time over the state of Mississippi, some private entities had come together and put together the ground, uh, ground rules for, for the, um, broadband. So they have an association in Mississippi that they are asking, uh, the counties who are, are serious about moving forward with broadband in rural areas. It's, it's, it's a five hundred dollar membership fee a year, and so I wanna, I want us to think about that, because I'm pretty much, oh, all of the rural areas in there, and we all wanna expand, and, uh, internet and broadband, you know, that's gonna be the way of the future, that's gonna be our kids and, uh, in the plants and stuff like that, so, uh, I took some information down, and, uh, I'm not gonna put it on this meeting, but if we, um, interested, and I hope we are, we'll get the, uh, information and proper, information to the proper people, and I would love for us to join that, um, that company, so I mean, that organization, so we can expand broadband in our rural areas. So now we back, I do have the, uh, Mr. William Barnes, I have his paperwork, uh, and I do have it signed right now. Uh, it's gonna be twelve hours, uh, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson. I get a second? Proper seconded by Supervisor Nelson, will there be any discussion?
Look at the phone.
Maintenance.
So they gotta open it?
Maintenance? Yeah, yeah, you know, we told him to hire someone. We told, to need to get somebody else. Yeah, he was supposed to bend it, and he didn't.
Is any of it budget?
Well, can I get a motion pending that budget review?
Tell me what.
It's twelve up.
Twelve hours an hour?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just twelve hours, uh, wonderful.
Who's the person?
His, his name is William Barnes.
So, that's something we get already approved, that we hire someone.
So.
I could have questioned somebody, but I can't say for sure.
Yeah.
But that's why I say, that's why I asked for a motion pending, reviewing.
You're talking, oh, you're talking about which maintenance? Johnny or them? Oh, no, I thought this was Johnny. I'm sorry, I take that, I take my motion back, until we find out what's going on.
Well, can I, well, I, that's why I say, I don't know what's the case, he hasn't been here, that's why I always ask, but the problem hadn't come. So can I get a motion pending? If he's in a bind, then he won't have to wait two weeks, so, but, but that's what's happening.
If we're going into taking a session, might be determined, he can come.
He can come before then, let's go into a second session then.
So we're gonna put this off, and, uh, I need a motion for close determination. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins, properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson, can I get a, I'm ready to vote, all in favor, vote by using the sound aye. Any opposed, may they have the same right.